Parks and Rec Director, so we come to the meetings every once in a while.
What's your name?
Steve Clark.
I should just say.
They're calling.
Oh, hey!
How you doing?
So.
I'm gonna.
And I'm not having that.
My guess is.
Uh.
My guess is not here with the speaker. Here to the speaker. But.
Yeah. I wish you would.
But.
Now, I'm saying your name.
Then you didn't.
No.
Which might be.
Yeah.
We're gonna have a lot of fun because.
Well, no, that's great. Yeah, no, we.
Two weeks.
Well, I mean, the video is pretty bad.
Yeah.
But at the same time, is that what's working right now?
And at least you can.
You're right.
Or you could clean out.
Okay.
But I'm trying to.
So, yeah, what we'll wanna do is work with the director that we talked to. Right. To see what he would like, because that would defeat him.
Sure.
And then we're gonna make it directly to electronic. That way.
There's ways.
It's way.
It's.
I can.
Once we get there.
But they still have.
Maybe.
No.
You know, this is an awful place, ten percent.
That's the.
Right. So, you know, if we ever do anything.
We own for twenty.
Would we put screens up here again? Would we use them? We're not gonna use them. I mean, the way they do things with.
Yeah.
The workshops, it's not things that you can do.
Right.
You don't really need.
Are the.
Is the.
So this.
We didn't get more class or at least.
This'll still be here.
Be movable.
Say, all the cords will be disconnected, and you can move this around wherever you want.
Oh, that's good. So it'll be wireless.
Yep. So to have its own wireless mic, then we'll also have another wireless mic that she can use for proclamations and things like that.
Oh, okay, cool.
So be separate.
That'll be nice.
And then Missy'll get her own microphone finally.
Oh, that's good.
She doesn't have a microphone.
Right, yeah, I know her and Candace always share one, so. Now, that'll be good.
If needed. And then, uh, they'll put a new sound processor in there, which helps everything.
Right.
Should be nice.
Yeah, that's good, 'cause it's needed, for sure.
Everybody that came in laughed at our projector.
Yeah.
So, were you here before my guests?
I used to face that. I was not here then. It's all been.
My guess is that the screen.
Probably.
And that probably used to go back.
Yeah, you're probably right.
Oh, yeah, I never thought about that. So I'll bet you that was.
There was some kinda automated control, which is right.
Yeah, it's doing okay. I mean, it's probably happened here, but, but Bondi's office.
So you wanna hear right off?
She's really trying to.
There you go.
They'll do.
That would be fun.
Do you need one? I do need one. I just want. I have some. It is. I've got hearing. I should come over. I'll sit around and make things. Thanks, my boss, I'm like. Uh.
I got your letter. You're not gonna credit. I'm just gonna email you back.
Don't wanna share.
And me, it's got some errors. Do I? Do I? You know, here's the thing. I gotta keep propping up your cap, Candace, you know that, right? And I. But you end one thing absolutely wrong, which was that ninety days of election. And you can help us in your lives.
I don't know. I just. I just learned. I just. Cause I can't. I can do. I can't. I don't.
And I think. I'm sure. I'm just. I appreciate it.
I'm yeah.
How you doing?
Good, you?
All right. Just might just.
I'm.
Yeah. No, I wouldn't. I wouldn't write. So. But, yeah, you definitely gotta shorten that. It's a three hundred fifty. It's a thirty eleven policy.
I know.
Right.
Something has applied.
Yes, yes, it does.
Okay.
The only one that doesn't have work council meeting.
Look at our.
You want me to hit it back?
I'll get that.
Before you, before you go to fresh.
Oh. Mister.
I've got one. You said. Kind of like, like your heart. I was. I don't do anything hard now. So now I have a chart.
I don't know. I don't know.
One thousand one.
I'm. Hey. Don't forget to turn your mics on.
to order. The first thing on our agenda is a moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Thank you. Would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, you've had the opportunity to review the council study session minutes of May the fifteenth and also the council meeting minutes of May the fifteenth. Are there any adjustments to be made to those? Seeing none, they'll stand approved. We have no communication petitions or awards this evening, nor do we have any public hearings, and that brings us to comments from interested citizens. If there's someone in the audience who would like to address counsel, would you please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and your comment?
Yeah, Richard Long, seventeen thirty-four Ashworth, uh, in Vandelia. And I don't know if this is the right time, I guess, but I've talked to the city manager when I was up here last time about a crosswalk at Stone Quarry and Peters for the Morton School. And I understand it's in township, but my thing is, these are all Vandelia kids that do use that crosswalk. It's not township kids, it's Vandelia students, and I'm just worried that some time or another someone's gonna get hit. And we've got push buttons there for the crosswalks. It's a shame that we can't get the lines put down for the crosswalks and even sidewalks, you know, to get to the rec center. A lot of these kids go to the rec center after school. But, you know, I, I would like to be able to see maybe somebody from council, you know, if it's in the township and it deals with township, deals with PTA, whoever, you know, the three entities get together and try to figure out what we could do to resolve that issue.
Thank you, Mr. Long. I'm going to ask, uh, Mr. Cruzy to, to address.
Actually, just had a conversation last week.
Yeah, I think you said you'd done the study and you turned it over to the PTA, correct?
I don't recall that.
I thought that's what you said.
No, I mean, um, I, I did get, I just had a conversation last week with the, the school district's new superintendent who's gonna take over July one, as well as the township administrator, and they were talking about, uh, the need to get sidewalks to both middle schools. So I think we're gonna be meeting here in the next couple of weeks to kinda come up with a plan on how we could get sidewalks to Morton Middle School.
Right.
You know, the, the running, the issues running to them, that's, that's a county, uh, road, Stone Quarry is.
Right.
So they gotta figure out who's gonna pay for that crossing.
Now, is Stone Quarry, uh, the, that's county, correct?
That's correct.
So really, we're dealing with the county, the township, and city.
City and the schools, yes.
The school.
Yeah, yeah.
So I know getting four of them together probably is a struggle, but, you know, I think for the kids' sake, you know, it, it would be well worth a while to be able to do something.
Yeah, I agree, there's a need for sidewalks out there. It's a matter of everybody doing their part and trying to get them coordinated.
Correct.
I know, um, the township had applied for grant funds to ODOT, and that wasn't funded, so now we're having to look for alternate ways to get those improvements in. But, yeah, we, again, we just had a talk about that with them last week, so.
Great, great. So at least something's being done, right?
Yes.
Now, now, what about the, you know, when they installed the traffic light poles and everything, you know, the push buttons are there, it's just, you know, having the sign, walk, don't walk, and just, uh, painting the crosswalks.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, I wasn't here when that was put in, so I'm not sure what they did or why they did what they did.
Yeah, I don't either.
With the push buttons or the crosswalks out there, so, unfortunately. Yeah, so I don't have a good answer for you on that.
Yeah. I mean, at least add some kinda security if we do have the crosswalks, you know.
Yeah.
Citizens know that pedestrians do have a little bit of a right of way, but these kids have nothing to protect them.
Correct.
Okay.
Again, the school, I don't, the, the school didn't put sidewalks in when they built their, the school.
Right, I don't understand why.
So they've got, they've got to do their part on the other side of the road as well, so.
Right, okay.
The good thing is, the issue is not dead, and the, uh, the four parties are still talking and so forth, so, uh, sooner than later, probably something will be accomplished.
Okay.
Did you have a comment? Do you have a comment? Oh, I'm sorry.
Holly Wiggins, six sixty Castle Creek Drive. My issue is much less important than his was, 'cause I agree, safety. Uh, but I wanted to remind, uh, the residents that were here and council and those that are business, uh, owners that you can go out onto the DPNL website, register up, it's mydpnl.com, or you can go to our regular website, dpnl.com, and get to it, and get, get your account set up that way. It, we're changing vendors that are processing our payments, so if you use a credit card, the payment fees are lower. Um, it also gives you access to, uh, the history of your account, and there's some other advantages. Those that have multiple accounts with their businesses can collapse many of those into one account, so you've got one spot to look for those things and a much easier way to make payments. So I just wanted to remind you that was available, and if, uh, the residents, uh, pay attention, they're having a contest to get folks to sign up, uh, starting the end of June and going into July, there'll be some prizes and things that you can win, so, uh, keep an eye out for that if you are somebody who wants to win, uh, fancy prizes by signing up. Thank you.
What's a fancy prize?
Um, I am not sure. I think, I, I think there may be some gift cards, but, uh, they're pushing some of those, um, energy efficiency, uh, thermometers and things, so there may be a thermostat in there, and, um, there's rebates on those going on, on the website as well, so.
Okay, great.
All right.
So go to the website, huh?
Yep.
Okay, thank you so very much. Anyone else have a comment?
Jack Froshar, one one six zero zero Castle Road. I asked Missy to print something off, and she's gonna pass it around for all of you that I found kind of interesting. And John, I have some kinda negative remarks, and I'm sorry about that, I really am. Uh, the gang can kinda be in their executive session. Uh, my best pass is just here, so I'll tell you that on the front end. Did you pass those around?
Yeah, they're coming.
Okay. The, the fact of the matter is, I, I was doing, I told, uh, Bridgette before the folks all came in, that I was doing some research, and, and along the way, uh, I, I found this among the fly pages in the annual, uh, financial report, and I, I thought it was important. It's important that, because it shows that number one in this city is the citizens of Vandelia. And then, right, right below that, comes the city council, and then comes the, uh, the city manager and the various departments. Number one is the citizens, and I bring that to your attention, because three weeks ago, uh, one of those number one position residents posted on Facebook a video of a truck that was reckless on Peters Pike. And I understand, I talked to Rob, I know Peters Pike is, is partially the city and, and only some of it is under our jurisdiction, but the point remains the same. There, the, the truck issue continues to be a problem, and I shared that video with Mr. Cruzy. And, uh, and he responded, the city had posted signs trying to send the, the, the trucks over to Airport Access Road, and he further advised that nothing could be done on Route forty. Well, friends, I am likely even more sick of fooling around with this than all of you. Uh, two years later, no remedy. January, six months ago, you authorized sixteen thousand dollars for a consultant, still nothing, and now I see in the city manager evaluation, you instruct Mr. Cruzy to fix it sometime soon. Are you kidding me? Really? Either he doesn't wanna get rid of the trucks, doesn't know how, or just could care less. And I don't even wanna fool around with it anymore, but I went ahead and emailed the ODOT director for District Seven. I got very familiar with him during the Great Railroad Controversy. He reiterated to me what he told me then, that jurisdiction over policing and maintenance on forty falls to the municipality. And that, this is not the first time that I've copied Cruzy on this, and, and he just doesn't wanna seem to accept that or figure out how to use it to solve the problem. Meanwhile, he reports that the consultant has an idea to stop traffic from turning off of twenty-five A to head west. For crying out loud, that's, that's not really the big problem. Uh, if that's the best we've gotten from a consultant, not one decent remedy in six months, then to me, I'd say we're getting ripped off. And I reached out to an acquaintance of mine who is a trucker, and, and he shared the remarks with me, and I shared them with Mr. Cruzy and all of you. And as, as the mayor remarked, his vocabulary was colorful. Uh, but his suggestion was the same as I've told Mr. Cruzy, Cruzy, for almost two years. Bear down on the truck drivers, costing them time and fines. That's what Pat told ya, that's what I've been saying for two years, and they'll stop using forty. Well, first, it was when I suggested it, it seemed somehow unfair. Now, the excuse is it'll require another patrolman. It makes me ask, don't we have, don't we have police on the west side of town? Loud and clear, this is, there's no mistake about my idea, if you do not wanna change the traffic laws, of which we are in charge, then give Mr. Cruzy a directive to have the chief enforce the laws on semi tractor trailers using forty. And I'm gonna tell ya, I believe the problem will be resolved. I can tell you this, there's a candidate for council. Uh, her name is Amber Weaver, and she's been engaging residents to discuss a variety of issues. She sent me a message, because somehow the trucking is my platform, but she sent me a message to tell me that residents find the truck situation dangerous. She also sent me an observation from a guy that she had talked to, same thing. I told all of you at the February community morning deal at, at the library, uh, that the number one issue to folks is this truck issue. And here we are, six months later with no change, other than spending money without any, really getting a solution. Are we waiting until the trucks shortcutting down Peters Road or traveling recklessly through downtown hurt somebody? Why in the world would you allow the city manager to not do his job to the possible peril of school kids near all that uncontained truck traffic? I mentioned that the subject of truck traffic is mentioned in the public document produced by council and captioned as the city manager evaluation. I'm sure there's nothing shady about it, but why would you have to make an emergency resolution number seventeen ten to handle a contract for the highest paid employee of the city? But more puzzling is that the guy scores below average by your own ratings, yet all of you voted unanimously on a two-year contract. A guy that shows absolutely no initiative, yet he's paid over a hundred thirty, thirty thousand dollars, and you vote seven to zero. Something's wrong there. But then there's the thing, citizens, not, they're, they're number one. They're number one right here in this city, deserve to know why. Why you all voted to retain a substandard manager? That's how you graded him? Because it's our city where we live, well, except for Mr. Cruzy, and those are number one residents, your friends and neighbors, they deserve way better. I think I deserve better. This evaluation is filled with apologies for John not being a good communicator in a job that requires communication skills and that he lacks personal energy. Are you joking? I asked in February.
I, I, I don't think we need a public lynching of our city manager. If you'd like to talk to us in private about that, uh, you're more than welcome.
It's a public document. You passed it seven to oh.
But, but I, I, I've seen your emails, uh, you know, three fourths of the stuff that you talk about is, is, is not true.
Uh, now, I'd watch myself there, Bob.
Yeah, you, you better watch yourself, because, uh, you're, you're quoting salaries, which is untrue, uh, it's not correct. You're quoting, uh, other information that I think is, uh, semi-accurate, uh, so, uh, we understand you, Jack. We, we, we've talked a long time, we, you've been with us, uh, for quite some time.
Yeah.
Had discussions, but.
Sure.
I think you're carrying a little bit too far tonight.
I, I would just like to say that, uh, I think that you have come to the point that you wanted to mention in the very beginning, and, uh, if, if you could sort of summarize anything left.
I'll let it go right there. I'll let it go right there.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else? Seeing none, we'll go on with the city manager's report with the information item about the Star Spangled Celebration Sports Complex.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I got, yeah, two items this evening. Uh, first one is, again, regarding the Star Spangled Celebration. Uh, so again, you know, the City of Vandelia and Butler Township will once again present the Star Spangled Celebration on Monday, July third. Uh, it will begin at seven PM. Uh, this year's event is sponsored by Fifth Third Bank, uh, Bow Towns and Ford Lincoln and Nissan, uh, Joseph Airport Toyota Scion and Hyundai, and Smedley Chevrolet, uh, with, with additional support, uh, from Digital Cowboys Computers. Uh, entertainment's gonna be provided by the group This Side Up. Our fireworks will begin at ten PM, and in case of rain, the fireworks will be held on Friday, July seventh. However, if that occurs, there will be no entertainment. And also want to remind the residents that city offices are gonna be closed on Tuesday, July fourth, in observance of the Independence Day holiday. However, the rec center will be open on, uh, July fourth from seven AM to noon, uh, but only the fitness area, the track, and the gymnasium.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so the city building will be open on Monday?
Correct, yes. Yeah, Monday, July third.
Uh, action items, boards and commission term, ex, terms expiring. Mr. Cruzy?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, so council has, uh, been provided a, uh, we got a list of those, uh, board and commission members who have requested reappointment, uh, and, and that's for those folks whose, whose terms expire, uh, June thirtieth of this year.
Do you have a motion?
I move that we approve the, uh, uh, new terms for the, uh, boards and commissions that's been submitted.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Ayler, just second by Councilman Herbst that we do approve the, uh, terms expiring for them to continue for our boards and commissions, and we did get a list of those.
That is correct.
So, everybody, does anybody have a question first? Everybody okay? Call the roll, please.
And, and Your Honor, I just want to point out that we are doing this as a slate as for convenience, and we did discuss this at the last work session, not tonight, but, uh, it was a choice of council to vote all in, as one, as opposed to individual.
Right.
And with that, Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Aylers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Donation of the fire truck, Mr. Cruzy?
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, there's, uh, been a request, uh, to donate our nineteen seventy-nine fire engine, which was recently replaced by a new twenty sixteen rescue engine, uh, to the Miami Valley Career Technology Center. Uh, the engine has been posted on GovDeals twice and failed to sell. Uh, the city previously donated an engine to the CTC in twenty thirteen for its high school fire and EMS program. Uh, the fire department has hired twelve of the school's graduates over the past two years, and we just recently brought, uh, five additional fire, part-time firefighters on board from CTC.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we approve the donation of the fire truck to the Miami Valley Career Technology Center.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Herbst, second by Councilman Blakeslee, that we do donate the, uh, fire truck to the CTC. Any questions or comments?
Just, I didn't know if I heard you say that it had been offered on GovDeals, Deals twice.
Correct, yes.
Was important.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Aylers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Uh, we have no old business this evening, and that brings us to our resolutions, the first one being seventeen dash R dash fifty-five. Mr. McDonald?
Seventeen hour fifty-five, a resolution to enter into an agreement for stop-loss coverage with Standard Life Insurance Company.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzy.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, so we did receive three quotes, uh, for our, our stop-loss coverage. Uh, several other companies declined to quote because they could not be competitive. Uh, the city's plan year runs July one through June thirty of each year. Uh, the only proposed change to our current plan is to increase our specific deductible from forty-five thousand to fifty thousand dollars. Our total maximum cost under this agreement is estimated to increase about two percent from two million four hundred twenty-four thousand five hundred thirty-five dollars to two million four hundred seventy-two thousand seven hundred twenty-three dollars.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution seventeen R fifty-five as noted.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Fars, second by Councilman Aylers, that we do approve Resolution seventeen dash R dash fifty-five as presented. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Aylers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Uh, Resolution seventeen dash R dash fifty-seven. Mr. McDonald?
Seventeen hour fifty-seven, a resolution waiving the formal bidding process and authorizing the purchase of three Motorola mobile radios requested by the Division of Fire from, from Motorola Solutions through P and R Communications, Inc., in the amount of fifteen thousand three hundred thirty-one dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzy?
Thank you, Your Honor. Okay, so the fire department budgeted twenty thousand dollars for the final phase of its Marx radio upgrade, which involves the purchase of three Motorola portable radios. Uh, P and R Communications is the exclusive vendor for Motorola in this region. Uh, the radio purchase would ensure that every firefighter working has a portable radio, as well as, uh, spare at the station for firefighters who are recalled or working on an extra alarm fires. Uh, the remaining funds will be used to purchase a new base station for Station Two, uh, and as well as three headsets, uh, for the drivers and operators of the fire trucks.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Resolution seventeen dash R dash fifty-six. Mr. McDonald?
Seventeen hour fifty-six, a resolution to enter into an agreement for legal services with Jackson Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, the city has utilized the services of Denlinger, Rosenthal, and Greenberg as outside legal counsel for collective bargaining and negotiations as well as personnel matters since 2004. On January 1 of this year, the lawyers at DRG joined National Labor and Employment Law Firm Jackson Lewis. Therefore, it's necessary for council to approve the engagement letter with Jackson Lewis since the cost of these services will most likely exceed $10,000.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Make motion to approve Resolution seventeen R seventy-six, as read.
Fifty-six, second.
Thanks for clarifying.
It's been moved by Councilman Blakeslee, second by Councilman Gerhard, that we do approve Resolution seventeen dash R dash fifty-six. Questions? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Resolution seventeen dash R dash fifty-seven. Mr. McDonald?
Seventeen hour fifty-seven, a resolution waiving the formal bidding process and authorizing the purchase of three Motorola mobile radios requested by the Division of Fire from Motorola Solutions through P&amp;R Communications, Inc., in the amount of $15,331.29.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, the fire department budgeted $20,000 for the final phase of its Marx radio upgrade, which involves the purchase of three Motorola portable radios. P&amp;R Communications is the exclusive vendor for Motorola in this region. The radio purchase would ensure that every firefighter working has a portable radio as well as a spare at the station for firefighters who are recalled or working on extra alarm fires. The remaining funds will be used to purchase a new base station for Station Two and as well as three headsets for the drivers and operators of the fire trucks.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution seventeen dash R dash fifty-seven.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Ayers, second by Vice Mayor Lewis, that we do approve Resolution seventeen dash R dash fifty-seven as presented. Comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Resolution seventeen dash R dash fifty-eight. Mr. McDonald?
A resolution waiving the formal bidding process and authorizing the purchase and installation of audio equipment from Soundforce, Inc., for the council chambers upgrade project requested by the Information Technology Department in the amount of $11,595.55 and declaring the existing items being replaced surplus property.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, three quotes were received for upgrades to the sound system here in the council chambers. Soundforce submitted the lowest and best quote to install two side speaker arrays with a combination of wired and wireless microphones.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve Resolution seventeen dash R dash fifty-eight.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Gerhard, second by Councilman Blakeslee, that we do approve Resolution seventeen dash R dash fifty-eight. Comments?
Just for all of you out there that can't hear us all the time, hopefully this will change that. And thank you to Darren. Darren, I guess, oh, there you are. We went back and forth, and he had to provide a lot of information to come up with this number and equipment, so thank you. And hopefully it'll relieve that inability for the people in the back to be able to hear council. Thank you.
One thing I was going to add is, as I mentioned in the workshop, that $11,595 seemed like a lot of money, and I didn't realize that audiovisual equipment costs quite so much, but I took several of the bids that Darren provided us with, and I Googled each of the part numbers. I looked for the best price I could find anywhere, and those prices were in line, so I was a little surprised that this stuff costs so much.
Anyone else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Resolution seventeen dash R dash fifty-nine. Mr. McDonald?
A resolution waiving the formal bidding process and authorizing the city manager to enter into a renewal software maintenance agreement with Harris Global Software in the amount of $25,087.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. The police department has contracted with Harris Global Software, a parent company of Cisco Public Safety, since 1999 for software maintenance for the department's public safety software that is used for dispatching police, fire, and EMS, as well as integrated records management and mobile reporting. This proprietary software can only be maintained by Harris.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we approve Resolution seventeen R fifty-nine as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, second by Councilman Ayers, that we do approve Resolution seventeen dash R dash fifty-nine. Once again, are there any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Resolution seventeen dash R dash sixty. Mr. McDonald?
Seventeen R sixty, excuse me, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Meter Investment Management Company for investment management services.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. The company that the city currently utilizes for the management of its investments, which is Bond Tech, recently became affiliated with the Midwest Management Company. So, during this transition period, the city evaluated its existing investment portfolio and explored options with several investment management companies. So, based upon the recommendations of several area cities, and after meeting with representatives from Meter and representatives from those other companies, the finance department is recommending that we contract with Meter Investment Management.
Is there a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we approve Resolution seventeen R sixty as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, second by Councilwoman Fars, that we do approve Resolution seventeen dash R dash sixty. And I would just like to make the comment was that I did appreciate the idea that they did come in and talk to all of us. It certainly, they were able to answer any of our questions and so forth immediately. It was very helpful. Anyone else?
No. I feel the same way. They gave a really thorough look at their management style and so forth. I appreciated that.
Anyone else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Resolution seventeen dash R dash sixty-one. Mr. McDonald?
A resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with Montgomery County regarding building inspection services.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Yeah, so back in 2016, the city entered into a cooperative agreement with Montgomery County Building Regulations for inspection services on an as-needed basis and contingent upon workload and availability. The fee per inspection was $40. Over the past year, the city performed 72 inspections for the county, primarily electrical, generating over $3,200 in revenue. The city did not require any inspection services from Montgomery County. Montgomery County has requested a three-year renewal of the current agreement. Inspection fees would be increased to $45 in 2017, and then $50 for 2018 and 2019.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve Resolution seventeen dash R dash sixty-one.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Gerhard, second by Councilman Blakeslee, that we do approve Resolution seventeen dash R dash sixty-one. Are there any comments? Is my understanding then, if indeed we would like to get out of this, we can at any time?
Correct.
Yes, they call it, it's on an as-needed basis and as-available basis, meaning if they need us, they'll give us a call. If we're available, we'll help them out. If not, we pass, and it goes to someone else.
Good. Anyone else? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Hers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Resolution seventeen dash R dash sixty-two. Mr. McDonald?
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an economic development government equity agreement with Montgomery County Office of Economic Development regarding the Laystar C2G project, and to enter into an accompanying Edge agreement with the Edge applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, going back to March of 2016, Mr. Shackelford presented the Laystar Cables-to-Go project to the Edge Committee for potential funding. We then did review this project with council at your March 20th study session this year. So, this resolution does authorize an Edge agreement with Montgomery County for the Laystar Cables-to-Go project. The project involves the relocation of the company from Rain to Vandelia, the retention or relocation of 125 jobs, which are new to Vandelia, has a payroll of $6.7 million, and an investment, the investment's actually $1.5 million. That's the amount that's Edge-eligible. The Edge request, it was approved for funding at the $50,000 level for this project, and Cables-to-Go recently committed to relocate the business to 6,500 Poe Avenue, which is the South Stratocash Building.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution seventeen dash R dash sixty-two, as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Fars, second by Councilman Ayers, that we do approve Resolution seventeen dash R dash sixty-two as presented. Any comments? All in favor? When you call the roll?
You threw me there for a second. Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Resolution seventeen dash R dash sixty-three. Mr. McDonald?
A resolution renaming the Vandelia Recreation Center in honor of Bruce E. Suker.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey, I'm going to invite Larry Taylor up, please, and for him to make some comments Thank you for coming.
Thank you for inviting me up. Hello. My name's Larry Taylor. Yes, it's true, I am good friends, was good friends with Bruce Suker for a lot of years. Bruce is, he's given his life to this town. He loved it with every fiber of his body. I said to him one time, I said, he came in my office, and we sit and talked, and he said, I said, "You know, Bruce, with your education and your skill set," I said, "You know, you could have been a very wealthy man." I said, "You're a half a million, million dollar a year man in the private sector, but you chose to stay here." He said, "Larry, I am a wealthy man." He said, "Not in money, but I have served the citizens of this town. It's been very rewarding for me to watch this town grow." What a comment. I mean, if you don't love that, you don't love. And then after, even after he did retire, had a few health issues, and retired from the city manager's position, I talked him into running for the school board. And so, he did that, and within a month, he became, he was just a natural leader, he became president of our school board. Just a phenomenal man. And, you know, serving as city manager of this town, John, can be tough at times, but I admire you. I admire all the council. It's a thankless job. You don't do it for any other reason other than you love our city, as Bruce did. And I thank you all for listening to me and taking time to consider this for Bruce and his family. What an honor. The man absolutely loved this town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Did you want to add anything?
I'm not sure there's anything to add.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will take a motion.
Your Honor, I'll move that we approve Resolution seventeen R sixty-three.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, second by Councilman Gerhard, that we do approve Resolution seventeen dash R dash sixty-three. Anybody else like to make a comment?
Could you explain what they're going to do? I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
I'd just like to make one comment. Larry, we also like to thank you for your personal involvement in this, and I spoke to a lot of citizens about Bruce and the renaming of the R Rec Center, and I had 100% agreement, so I know the emotions are still pretty raw. It hasn't been that long since Bruce passed away in a sorely missed, so thanks again for your help and involvement.
I wanted you to explain how they're going to handle that, and I've already gotten used to saying Suker Center, so I think that goes really well. And he was a very appreciated part of our community. I think anybody who knew him knew that he put everything he had back into Vandelia, and I think it's a very rewarding for us to be able to do this in his name.
I know, may I call upon you, Steve, because I know that we've talked a little bit about how we're going to be recognizing it, and did we finally come up with the wording that we were going to have?
Not yet. I was waiting for the official part of it, but I've done some research on like a bronze plaque for the lobby, and then redoing our signage at the entrance to the park, so...
So, that's yet to come. Do you think that it'll be before the fall? That this can be, okay, good. Okay, good. Thank you so very much. Anyone else?
Well, I know that we all wanted to make the motion, and I know we all wanted to second it at the same time, but it's a great way to honor a good man that did so much for this community, as Mr. Taylor pointed out, both for the city and the school district. And he did have one mission in mind, and that was the citizenry of the community. And Bruce would be proud and honored, but I think he would say that, "I don't deserve it," because that's the kind of man that he was. And, but I think we all agree that he does deserve it.
He had a lot of passions about a lot of things that went on, but I think that it was the rec center that was his baby. Because whenever I'd come up to the office, he'd say, "Get a hard hack in, Arlene. Let's go over. Let's see what they're doing today." And so, yeah, I think that we all have very fond memories of situations that we worked with him, some that turned out to be things that citizens would never know about and everything, the water system, and how he knew about all of the, when you get this job, you learn about all the things that are underground, so to speak. And he was very, very much up to all of that. And then being a police officer and a police chief, and it just goes on and on. So, yes, he's very, very worthy of acknowledgement, and this is probably the best way to acknowledge him.
I thought it was interesting that his influence is still very present today, because when we tried to figure out the way in which to honor him with the Parks and Rec Board, we tried to figure out the most cost-effective way to do that. And that's straight from his influence in the community.
Great. I guess we're ready for the roll call.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Resolution seventeen dash R dash sixty-four. Mr. McDonald?
A resolution authorizing the termination of the Capital Improvement Reserve Fund and transfer of its funds back to the general fund.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, so this ordinance would dissolve the Capital Improvement Reserve Fund, which is no longer needed for city operations. The remaining balance of $656,238.89 would be transferred to the general fund. Thereafter, $250,000 will be transferred from the general fund to the Facilities Improvement Fund for a future public works facility, per council's direction during your 2017 budget review sessions.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move that we approve Resolution seventeen R sixty-four.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Ayers, second by Councilman Herbst, that we do approve Resolution seventeen dash R dash sixty-four. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Herbst?[1606.63]
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Setzer?
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. We have the first reading of our ordinance seventeen fourteen. Mr. McDonald?
Seventeen fourteen. An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of one million five hundred fourteen thousand dollars in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purposes of acquiring approximately 201 acres of real property bounded generally by U.S. Route forty, Peters Pike, Stone Quarry Road, and Dogleg Road in support of economic development and job creation within the city and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. So the purchase of land and the construction of infrastructure for Stone Quarry crossings has been financed since 2006 by the issuance of bond anticipation notes that must be renewed annually. The total amount currently due is two million thirty-nine thousand dollars in principal plus forty thousand six hundred sixty-six, sixty-seven dollars in interest. And due to the sale proceeds from the Morton site and the independent can, a total of five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars will be paid toward the principal balance. Therefore, the remaining principal balance on the notes will be one million five hundred fourteen thousand dollars. Council is asked to consider this ordinance as an emergency at your July seventeenth meeting.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we approve ordinance seventeen fourteen in its first reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, second by Councilwoman Farce, that we do approve ordinance seventeen dash fourteen in its first reading. Any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Setzer?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Ordinance seventeen dash fifteen. Mr. McDonald?
Ordinance seven fifteen. An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of three million two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purposes of paying the cost of refunding bonds originally issued by the city for the purpose of paying cost of A, improving the municipal complex by constructing, equipping, equipping and improving a justice center to house the courts and the police department and related activities, renovating, equipping, and improving the municipal building, constructing relating parking facilities, and acquiring real property and interest therein in connection therewith, all together with the necessary appurtenances thereto, and B, constructing, equipping, and furnishing a municipal community recreation center, including a gymnasium, swimming pool, track, fitness area, lockers, office, and other recreational and related support facilities, all together with necessary appurtenances thereto, and acquiring real property and interest therein in connection therewith and declaring an emergency.
Did you write that?
No, I did not write this one.
Yeah.
Mr. Cruzey?
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. Okay, so, so the bonded, bond anticipation notes related to the 1996 bonds that were issued for the rec center, justice center, municipal building project are due to mature on September seventh. The notes are scheduled to be retired in 2021, which is when the original bonds would have been retired. The total amount due is four million seventy-six thousand dollars in principal plus seventy-one thousand one hundred thirty-two dollars in interest. The 2017 budget appropriated eight hundred seventeen thousand dollars towards principal plus the interest cost. The re-issuance of the rec center, justice center, municipal building notes will be combined with the issuance of the fire truck notes in order to save issuance cost, which is the next item on your agenda. And again, this ordinance is also requested to be considered as an emergency at your July seventeenth meeting.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the ordinance seventeen dash fifteen in its first reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Ayers, second by Councilman Herbst, that we do approve ordinance seventeen fifteen as presented. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Setzer?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Ordinance seventeen dash sixteen, Mr. McDonald?
Seventeen sixteen. An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of four hundred and thirty-two thousand in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of acquiring a fire apparatus, together with all appurtenances thereto and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. So these notes are related to the 2016 purchase of the new rescue fire engine and are also set to expire September seventh. Now, the principal amount, principal amount due is four hundred eighty thousand dollars. The 2017 budget includes forty-eight thousand dollars toward principal and eight thousand three hundred seventy-seven dollars in interest. The remaining principal balance will be four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Again, the, the fire truck notes will be combined and reissued with the rec center, justice center, municipal building notes in order to save issuance cost. And this ordinance is also requested to be considered as an emergency at your July seventeenth meeting.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Your Honor?
I move the motion.
Good.
That we approve ordinance seventeen dash sixteen in its first reading?
It's been moved by Councilman Gerhardt, second by Councilwoman Farce, that we do approve ordinance seventeen sixteen in its first reading. Any comments?
I just had a question. Why are we approving it as an emergency the next time if we had a first and a second reading?
Well, because we can't wait the 30 days for it to become effective, but we have the ability to give it two readings, so we prefer to give it two readings.
Okay, two readings, but then it'll go into effect immediately.
Correct.
All right, thank you. I just was, clarification.
Anybody else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Setzer?
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. Ordinance seventeen dash seventeen, Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance rezoning part of the property generally located at the northeast corner of I-75 in Northwoods Boulevard from Office Industrial Park to Highway Business and amending the zoning map of the city.
Excuse me. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So CSX Realty Development is requesting a rezoning of approximately 5.46 acres located at the northeast corner of I-75 and Northwoods Boulevard from Office Industrial Park to Highway Business. The 1985 comprehensive plans, future land use map, does project this area for Office Industrial Park development, again, which matches its current zoning. The future land use map projects the shops at Northwoods Plaza, or the Kroger Plaza, for Office Industrial Park development as well. However, that property was rezoned to Gateway Business back in 2001. The zoning code did establish standards for zoning map amendments, which states that the planning commission shall not recommend the adoption of a proposed amendment unless it finds that the adoption of such an amendment is in the public interest and not solely in the interest of the applicant. So the planning commission did review this rezoning request at its May 23 meeting and voted three zero to recommend denial.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we deny ordinance seventeen dash seventeen as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Farce and second by Councilman Ayers that we deny the very, the request. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any comments from anybody? Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Setzer?
Yes, and the motion seven zero to deny the, the rezoning. Ordinance seventeen dash eighteen, Mr. McDonald?
Seventeen eighteen. An ordinance approving a planned unit development, final development plan for lot three of the forty west development, formerly referred to as the Vandalia Office Park and located at 205 West National Road.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, so Health Core has submitted a PUD final development plan for lot number three of the forty west development. The proposed 8,000 square foot medical office will house two tenants. Dr. Volka, local dentist, will be the primary tenant. Access to the building will be provided via a shared ingress egress easement between this building and the prime ed building that is under construction. The applicant is proposing three 25 square foot wall signs where only one sign per tenant is permitted for a multifamily dwelling. The request for each tenant to have a wall sign in addition to a building identification sign on the south facade facing National Road. The planning commission did review this final development plan at its May 23 meeting. They voted three zero to recommend approval, subject to several conditions. First is that the, the parties agree that only those, the following uses will be permitted on the property and those are the uses that council authorized as part of the original PUD development plan. That the dumpster enclosure will comply with the requirements of the city's code and will be of complementary color and material to the primary structure and the applicant be limited to one wall side per tenant for two signs, not to exceed the requirement that are set forth in our city, in the sign code for office and service zoning districts.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the ordinance seventeen dash eighteen, subject to the recommendations made by the planning commission.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Farce, second by Councilman Blakesley, that we do approve ordinance seventeen dash eighteen with the added recommendations from the planning commission. Comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Setzer?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Ordinance seventeen dash nineteen, Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance authorizing an adjustment to the boundary line between the city of Dayton, Ohio and the city of Vandalia, Ohio, by agreement of both municipalities pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 709.37.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. So we have received a proposal from the city of Dayton for a boundary adjustment for a 1.4, I'm sorry, 1.1432 acre parcel located on the north side of National Road between Airport Access Road and Concord Drive. The subject parcel was located within the city of Vandalia but is owned by the city of Dayton and surrounded on three sides by the city of Dayton. The requested boundary adjustment would change the corporate boundary line to remove the parcel from the city of Vandalia and place it within the city of Dayton. Per the terms of the accompanying intergovernmental agreement, the city of Dayton would pay Vandalia 34,296 dollars as compensation for the boundary adjustment.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance seventeen dash nineteen.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Ayers, second by Vice Mayor Lewis, that we do approve Resolution seventeen dash nineteen. Any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Setzer?
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. The last ordinance for this evening in its first reading is ordinance seventeen dash twenty, Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances and certain resolutions as part of the various component codes of the codified ordinances, providing for the adoption of and publication of new matter in the updated and revised codified ordinances and repealing ordinances and resolutions in conflict therewith.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. So this ordinance does approve the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances and resolutions that have been passed by council since the last update of the codified ordinances. And this update will codify all pertinent legislation passed by council during 2016 as well as incorporating amendments to the high revised code.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance seventeen dash twenty as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Gerhardt, second by Vice Mayor Lewis, that we do approve ordinance seventeen dash twenty as presented. Any comments from anyone? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Setzer?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. We do have an ordinance in their second reading and that is ordinance seventeen dash thirteen, Mr. McDonald?
Seventeen thirteen. An ordinance approving a major amendment to the planned unit development for the property located at 117 South Dixie Drive and owned by KH Properties LLC in the OS District with a PUD overlay.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. So this PUD major amendment would allow the construction of a six-foot-high wooden privacy fence along the south and rear property lines. The property in question is an office service and lies within the downtown PUD overlay. The site contains a two-story office building that abuts multifamily residential to the rear. The planning commission reviewed this request at its April 25 meeting and voted five zero to recommend approval.
Thank you. Since this is, since this is an ordinance in its second reading, I will open up a public hearing. If there's anyone interested in making comment, would you please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records and your comment? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for...
Motion. That we approve ordinance seventeen dash thirteen in its second reading?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Ayers, second by Councilman Gerhardt, that we do approve ordinance seventeen thirteen in its second reading. Any comments? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Setzer?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. We have no emergency ordinance, ordinances this evening. And that brings us to the reports from our boards and commissions, including the civil service draft minutes of May the 12th, the golf advisory board draft minutes of May the 23rd, public art and Vandalia draft minutes of May the 16th, Vandalia Cultural Arts Committee draft minutes of May the 16th. Are there comments on any of those? The bill listing for May 2017 is in the amount of 2,594,059 dollars and 54 cents. And that brings us to council comments, starting with Mr. McDonald. Mr. Cruzey?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
We're going to start over here with Mr. Blakesley, Councilman Blakesley.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
How about Councilman Gerhardt?
Um, I don't know if everyone noticed, but we had 18-plus voting issues tonight and we've had a ton of stuff going on here in our city. So I'd like to compliment City Manager Cruzey and his staff for the excellent job they've been doing, keeping us up to date on everything that's going on. And then, I don't know how many viewers there are, encourage everyone to come out to the Star Spangled Celebration. It's probably one of the funnest events that we have. It gets the whole community together and Councilman Blakesley endorses the band this year. And Rossi's has done a better job year after year of putting on the fireworks. So thank you, John, and thank you to your staff.
Councilman Ayers?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilman Herbst?
I'd like to thank Mr. Bergman for attending our workshop and bringing his concerns for our city and our downtown and some different ideas on what we can maybe do to improve the, the whole community, for our citizens. And I really appreciate his, his effort to come and speak to us.
Thank you. Councilwoman Farce?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor Lewis?
Against my better judgment, I'm going to comment on some statements that were made earlier tonight. Inasmuch as I really truly believe that criticism of our body or of the city is healthy for the organization and healthy for us, I thought the comments went beyond that and, and bordered on a personal denigration of, you know, an individual and/or individuals. And I believe that is unhealthy and it's not appreciated. And I would hope that in the future, that the public comments would not be individual but would address either issues or policy issues as it relates to the people here that are working for the city and on behalf of the citizens. And the last comment I have is very much in support of the sidewalk issue. I think we've been waffling on that for a little while and I think the, Mr. Long's comments were well taken and we need to maybe drive that issue, even though it is, that area is in the township and it's not directly our financial responsibility. I think we could take, we can take the bull by the horns there and drive that thing and get a sidewalk from, from the rec center to Morton. And I'd like to see that, like, like to see that get done. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. We will continue, we will go to our workshop that we didn't get finished, and then we will have an executive session afterwards. We will adjourn to the executive session to discuss the possible acquisition of real property and to discuss the performance of the city manager. So with that, we will return.